What's going on everybody? It's your boy Doc from Analog Media. Team Analog and myself decided to go down to the Guelph Black Heritage Society's Town Hall meeting. I wanted to hear from some of the voices and see what was actually going on firsthand. And also, we want to show you all what's been transpiring in the city of Guelph, and showing the public concern. So check this out. I'm here with Jonathan Ball, one of the founders of the GBHS, the Guelph Black Heritage Society. And definitely, the building that you see right behind me is actually, you know, this individual right here has been one of the integral persons that was able to obtain this building in the first place. And the history of this whole aspect has been extremely integral and very important to this community. So Jonathan Ball, one of the persons here that has invested in this great historic building and this location. Thank you for having the time to talk to us. Just really quickly, let's talk about, you know, your involvement in acquiring the building in the first place as one of the members acquiring the building, as well as talk about, you know, where the beginning points were and how we end up here in 2025?
Well, this all began with the announcement of the sale of the building on the open market. And there were three of us that actually were instrumental in stopping the sale of the building. And that was Wayne Smythe, John Leacock and myself. And we were, we actually put a blank cheque on the table in order to get the property. So there was nobody else involved at that time. And we envisioned an organization that would take the building forward as a community resource and a community hub. And we invited those people around the table, and that was the initial board of directors that we chose from the community. And that's the basic history of how this came into being. And, you know, over time, it's, you know, there have been maybe some issues in the community around that and a lack of understanding of who were the founding members here and how it came to be as it is. And that's why we're here today with an open town hall meeting to talk about that.
In recent media articles that's been putting out in local media here, has shown publications based on the fact that there was a sort of a demerit of who were the founders in that article, just morally kind of focusing on the fact that these founders are so-called volunteers. How do you feel about this? And what can we do to sort of put that notoriety that, you know, indeed, we have the original founders present and working actively to try to make things right?
I mean, that's pretty straightforward. The people who were involved in the founding have far more documentation as to how this came to being. You know, if the media are writing articles or reports on this, then it's quite possible that they're just informed. That's a possibility. But I mean, the most important thing is to have an open dialogue and open conversation. And that's why there's an open town hall, you know, announced. And, you know, I think that accountability is important. I think that open conversation is important. And anybody who is shying away from that may have something to hide. Because the truth will come out either way.
All right, Jonathan Ball, thank you so much for the information. And just lastly, going forward, what are some of the things that you expect to see out of the GBHS going forward?
Well, I would like to see far more transparency, accountability, integrity. I would like to see far more community openness to community and community involvement. And I think those would be good starting place.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan Ball, one of the founding members of the GBHS. I'm here right now with Wayne Smythe, one of the founders of the Guelph Black Heritage Society, which he played one of the pivotal roles in the development of this society, as well as the purchasing of this building that we see in the background. Wayne Smythe is here today, obviously, to ask a few questions and start wondering a little bit about the Guelph Black Heritage Society, as there has obviously been a lot of people inquiring about what is the the interactions to the communities. Wayne Smythe, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good, good. So let's just kind of go back to a time when this all started and why we are here today.
Well, it all started about 14 years ago, when the building behind us was put up for sale. And those of us that knew what the building is in its connection to the Underground Railroad made efforts to start the Guelph Black Heritage Foundation at that time, which turned into this society.
So, you know, knowing the historical values and so forth that has happened in this very same location. Let us know how the Guelph Black Heritage Society was manifested and what we see then and what we're trying to do now.
Well, I mean, in the beginning, I mean, our mission statement and vision statement that's on the Guelph Black Heritage Society website is pretty much what we're still in line with, history and its historical importance, and basically serving the needs of our community, right? So, you know, great job to date in terms of looking after the building Heritage Hall. But however, at the moment, there's lots of criticism from the community that the organization is not meeting the needs of the stakeholders, which is the Guelph community and Tri-City's community. So we, a town hall meeting was called and everybody was notified, I think it was around early February. So we're here today to try to sit down and talk with Denise Francis, Kahira Lewis and Alicia Bolan about the current leadership and the strategic direction of the organization. And particularly, what are the mechanisms of action to hear some of the criticisms from the community so that we can get ourselves in a position where we're meeting the needs of the community, right?
Right. And so, having said these things, what I'd like to know is, do you see that there has been a great amount of outreach between the GBHS, which has been or pretty much the only black organization out of Guelph? And is there proper outreach to the community? Or do you feel like a lot needs to be done? Do you think there needs to be improvement?
Oh, I think a tremendous amount of work has to be done there. The organization has become exclusive, in my analysis. It's a very inclusive organization, very hard for members to sit down with the governing body, have discussions, bring forth suggestions, and even participate in such a way that we're feeling included. Right now, we're completely excluded. I mean, today's an example. A town hall meeting has been called and no one from the executive is here to open the doors so we can have the meeting. That's why we're outside at the moment.
Just give us a really quick timeline as to how we got here with that situation. Understanding that, you know, in literally a year, there has been, of course, a lot of people showing that concern. Just give us a quick timeline of how this sort of came to be and why we're here today.
Well, good question. I think it was almost a year ago Denise Francis made an announcement that she was stepping down as president. Therefore, we, the community, heard the news. It was a public announcement. So we were concerned about the organization and what was going to happen with the position. So we formed a group and were asking Denise if we could sit down and talk with her at that point about the direction and what's going to happen if she's stepping down. So the community got together, formed a group called the Guelph Transparency, Accountability and Integrity Group. And we met regularly, minuteed and so forth, with the intention of helping the organization figure out some of the internal stuff going on. And the community got together and suggested that John Leacock might be good for president, given his status in the community. And he's also one of the original founders of the organization, right? So that's what started all of this as to, and then hearing from community leaders like yourself and other community leaders about some of the criticisms where we are 2024, 2025, and what isn't being met, right? And what the community is saying. So a tremendous amount of feedback, but there is no loops at the moment that that discourse can happen. And that's what we're really moving for at this point, is to be able to sit down and have some discussions about the direction of the organization so that we can meet the needs of the stakeholders.
Okay, and that's pretty thorough right there. Wayne Smythe, everybody. Here, one of the original founders of the Guelph Black Heritage Society. And here in presence to just see about what the future holds and what improvements we can make as a community. And what the GBHS, what are their duly responsibilities to this community as well? Anything you want to say?
No, it's just great to see the amount of people that came out here today and that knew about it and have the similar concerns. So it's great what's happening now.
I'm here right now with some of the newer members of the community, of course. Guelph has been expanding exponentially with its ethnic spectrums, as well as the black community has also been growing in the last seven to 10 years. And we have somebody by the name of James, who's also here wanting to be a part of this organization. As the Guelph Black Heritage Society is one of the only black organizations that, you know, a lot of the people in the black community want to take part in. So with James being here, how you doing, brother?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. And just let me know exactly, you know, you being here today. What are the things that you're looking for? What are the questions you'd like to ask? And what are sort of the things that you'd like to know as in general, with understanding what this organization could do for you as a person of the community?
Well, I'll start off with saying I've been in Guelph for almost three years. And this is actually the first time I've heard of community in Guelph. And it was through my friend Benji. He invited me. He said, "Come over, see what's happening over here." And mainly, what I'm looking for is a society, a community, like-minded people. Because so far, I haven't actually seen that. I haven't seen a lot of groups accommodating black people. So I'm just, I'm pretty much just looking for that, you know, where to feel, you know, a part, to belong. That's what I'm looking for, you know? And questions I would ask would be, how exactly is this foundation or group involved with this society? How are they helping black people? How are they, you know, answering the questions that black people do have, the problems that they face here and there in a small community like Guelph? I think that's mainly because I never really knew that this had existed. You know, I've pretty much just been on my own, you know, just cruising through life until my friend introduced me and told me, "Hey, there is this thing in Guelph. It's a Guelph Foundation group." And that's how I showed up here today.
Yes. So you did try to communicate or connect with the GBHS, but no communication back?
No, I wouldn't say I did try. I just didn't know at all that this did exist, you know? I kind of would expect that, you know, there'd be a form of outreach, looking for where the black people, you know? I would say, okay, maybe it's all on my part, not searching. But I always thought maybe, you know, you would find these things or they would look for you maybe.
Yeah, so you see a lack of basically outreach and basically any sort of, you know, sort of advertising of the organization in general, right?
Yes.
Do you find that very difficult?
I feel like that should be a major part of, you know, a community, right? If the claim is you're a black community, you're looking to get black people, there should be more outreach, right, to the black community, looking for all where the new people, where people who are, or the black people who are new to Guelph, you know? I feel like that's a failure on their part, something which can definitely be improved.
All right. Thank you, James. It's very, very amazing that you got to talk with us.
Thank you very much.
All right. Cool. So what sort of things do you really see at this point in time when it comes to the, you know, the current standings of the GBHS? What things can be improved or, you know, even things that you have seen already? Just give us a little timeline of what, you know, your involvement and so forth.
Well, I go right back to the beginning. I was actually in New York City on celebrating my birthday when I got a phone call from John Leacock saying, "This is something we need to do." And I was completely on board, having been with these guys before, doing some pretty phenomenal things. And so put myself where I should be and supported the whole thing. And been really excited by how the restoration of the building's gone, the programming had gone, the development of ideas and things like that. And then I've seen a change of face. It was very much the Caribbean diaspora and now it's African diaspora as well. So there's new needs and new changes happening. It was mainly Guelph residents at the beginning. Now it's newcomers to Guelph who are looking for things. What I think we have a great opportunity to do is continue to educate in a different way though. One is providing programming locally, but also shuttle diplomacy to different organizations that already exist, that can support people. And the other part is that I think that we're missing some key partnerships out farther outside of Guelph. For example, when I was in New York, I had just left the African History Museum and talking to the warden there, because it's a national park, and telling him about what I just happened. And he was like, "Well, that would be great." We could, you could be in the tourism aspect of the history of everything. And then there was, more recently, I've been thinking about, there's been a lot happening that have been educational forums where 200 people are showing up in Guelph, but the membership here hasn't heard about it. And imagine if we merged that alliance as well. So I think, I mean, just look around today, how many people are excited about the future of GBHS?
Yeah. That's a great thing you're saying there. You know, with even Guelph's growth in the, you know, the generalized ethnic spectrum, there's a lot of people that, you know, want to just basically find a way how to feel at home. And knowing that the GBHS is one of the only, or in fact, the only black organization, or even related in the diasporas, you know, and so forth. It's actually incredible that the outreach from what we've gathered here has been really bad. What sort of things can we see in the future that, I know you did say that earlier, but do you think that there could be some things that we could fix in that sort of regards?
Well, we were working really, really well with the Black Students Association on campus. And I have this feeling that that alliance has broken down for some reason. Yes, University of Guelph has a great group. There's also a group out of Toronto in Brampton, actually. I met her at the university. This woman is in the development of youth and businesses. There's the Black Business Association in Toronto. There's a strong, strong group in Kitchener who have been giving scholarships out for years. And I think that it's so many untapped. And Oramon Danto did similar to us. A year after we bought this church, they bought the church in Oramonato. And they are farther ahead than we are. So it's limitless if we have a leadership who says, "Let's reach out and collaborate more."
Right, right. That's excellent. And I'm really glad to see that you're here in that sort of situation. As you can see, the doors are locked. If you want to pan over, you know, she's been trying to open that door there. And that's exactly what's going on. The doors are locked and they're waiting for the leadership to basically come in and do a proper town hall. So thank you so much, Barrow.
Thank you guys for being here. I appreciate that.
All right.
Yeah, take care.
All right. Thank you. Benji, how you doing?
I'm doing okay, thank you.
You've lived in Guelph for how long now?
Six years. Yeah, six years, correct, yeah.
And let us know a little bit about, you know, coming to Guelph and wanting to be a part of some community things that's happening and so forth, and how it led you to be a part of the GBHS.
Well, I'd like to say that every time I move around Guelph and I see people, Africans, I see in their faces the isolation, I see in their faces the craving for a community. And I feel like GBHS is a good, is a good place to provide that for people, where people can feel a little bit of home while they're away from home. And that's what has actually motivated me to be a part of this organization. And wanting to see the organization grow and impact more on the people that are here. That's it, basically.
So with that sort of, you know, looking at those outcomes and wanting to see such things actually happen, my question is, what have you literally seen in this sort of situation leading up to now?
What I have seen? I would say in all honesty that I've attended some events here. But I would say that it can be better. And that's really what I'd like to say as regards to that. It has not been exactly what I would say I expected to see, but there's always room for improvement. And that's really what I'm looking forward to right now. Yeah.
When it comes to the communication, as you are being a, as you are, I should say, a current member of the Guelph Black Heritage Society, can you explain to us a little bit about how it's been in terms of the communication with the, with the members of the current members, memberships here at the GBHS?
As regards to communication, I would just like to take it back a little bit. I'll take it back a little bit to the last meeting I had with the rest people. And I would say that we had a meeting that didn't go too well. And I feel like it's pretty much typical of human beings to have conflicts. Organizations to have conflicts, it's normal, right? Well, it's a conflict resolution process that we should be looking at. But I feel that has not been exactly fantastic. So I recall we had a rough meeting. And then after that one, I was expecting that we come back together for how do we address those issues? And I did send out an email asking for the next meeting. And that was only one. I got a response from one person and the rest people were quiet. And I'd say that it just really hurts me that I felt disrespected and belittled being a part of the organization. It really hurts me and I feel like it can be better. And that's really what I would like to see. Yeah.
Okay, you know, that's an interesting aspect you're looking at there. So really and truly, do you find that information has got to you accurately in terms of what's been going on with the organization thus far? Is information and sort of things that happens within this organization, is it reaching you as a current member right now?
Unfortunately, no. I feel like the last time I heard from the rest of people will be like eight months ago. And I still feel like, yeah, I don't know what that sounds like to you, but eight months ago is up to us to judge if that's actually good enough or no. Yeah.
So you're saying eight months until the recent meeting, there was no correspondence, no emails, no newsletters, nothing?
No, not, not, not at God.
As a current GBHS member?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right. You're right.
So, I mean, having said this, what sort of things can be improved, I mean, you know, thus far as we are here?
I feel like a structure is always what I've asked for. I feel there has to be a structure where people know what is expected of them, that has to be in place. There has to be a level of outreach that connects with the community in a way that every single person that comes into the city must have heard about this place and will find this place as a solace where they would come to. So that's really what I feel like would be helpful for the community and for the historical and cultural implication of this place. I feel it's a huge tourist destination and this place is to be, this place should be highlighted as such. Yeah.
Everybody's here, of course, town hall meeting, no access to the GBHS right now. And of course, how do you feel about this?
Not happy. Not happy, period. Yeah.
All right. That is Benji right here, man. Anything else you would like to add?
Oh, no, I'm leaving for now. But yeah, I would just like to see this place work better, everybody else, and that's it. Thank you.
I'm here with a community member and of course, a very large impact of our city, Mr. John Leacock, who is also a founding member of the GBHS and has really, really put forward a vision back in the days to really see that something can really come through into fruition today. John, how are you doing?
I'm happy to be here and in support of the community. And the people that are here clearly are showing their trepidation, they're showing their, I'm trying to use the right word, that they're just not happy with the way things are running. The organization could do so much more in the community to deal with what the original destination of this place. This place is an Underground Railroad destination, which provided a safe space for people to come and feel comfortable within their culture and within the specific needs of the place. I've been involved as the listing realtor, no, as the purchasing realtor of this place back in 2011 and did a lot of the work along with several board members and people in the community to mobilize the community, to raise the funds to purchase the building and to use the most creative ways to get us into where we are now, which is a fully accessible building owned by the black community, the BIPOC community of Guelph. We rebranded the place as a community hall and it also becomes a church during different times of the year. What we have now is that we have a constitution within the organization that needs to be addressed so that certain board members don't stay there forever and that we could bring in new ideas. And every time we try to bring in new ideas to the organization, we end up with problems, we end up with people putting a wedge in the wheel of progress, right? We have one person now who has, is the president, the treasurer and the secretary, which I think is a major problem, especially when you're dealing with economic development and growth of the community. We need to diversify the responsibilities to as much people as possible. During COVID, me and individuals at this organization, and I'm trying to get my me's and my I's out of this, but we were able to raise the funds to do an accessible walk, which actually has the braille of a freedom walk. So we have all of these visual, visible motifs of what the, what blackness is in Guelph, but yet we're not reaching the community that we need to reach. We have people come here to Guelph from all over, southwestern Ontario, from Cambridge, Kitchener, Waterloo, the African community, the Caribbean community, the First Nations. All the different people here with interest to make this, this place more and fit in with what we're supposed to do, which is our founding principle, to be a destination for economic growth and development of the BIPOC community of Guelph. And that's, we've fallen far short of that. Is that a short enough answer?
Yes, that's very good. Really quickly, being that you've been a part of the organization and so forth, what are some of the organizational aspects that you've seen is rather flawed based on what we've collected today?
I mean, the flawedness is typical of what happened in the revolution of slavery, where people fight against each other instead of coming together and uniting towards revolutionary growth. That's a problem. So anytime somebody steps up and wants to do anything different, then it becomes a difficulty where people don't have opportunity to express themselves. So these things could change, right? And it's very easy for it to change. All these people here, gathered here today, should be part of the organization and should feel full access to the building, right? Everybody should have key access to this building so that black people could understand what ownership is. This is one of the few organizations in Canada owned by black people. A lot of churches are not owned by black people. They're just people go there, right? We need a place where people, we actually own. So the youths and everybody that grew up in this community could understand that sense of ownership, right? So that if you want to talk about economic growth and development, you gotta have that sense of ownership and get the youths involved. So that's why I want to, that's my biggest beef, is that the people here, they run in the church like a Caribbean furniture shop where there's plastic all over the furniture, right? We need to take that plastic off and get people in here doing stuff. We need to have the place where it shows some wear and tear. It looks perfect. But it's not perfectly reaching the community that we need to reach, right? There's so many, Guelph is becoming a very diverse community. So we need a place where people could come and find out how to get in here and how to make the best moves. A lot of people immigrate to Canada with big degrees and they come to Guelph and end up becoming PSWs because they don't have the skill set to do things that are fully, and that's why we need people like myself. I'm one of the most connected black males in Guelph because I volunteer so much in so many different organizations. And I would love to be able to mentor people and to let them know how to make that economic growth and how to get into the community and do things that are good. That's why I'm here. I'm sick, but I'm here just to rock and tell you guys why I'm here and why I'm concerned about what's going on in Guelph.
Lastly, the last question I want to ask you is, you know, of course, you being a member of the GBHS and so forth. How do you feel with the communication and information getting to you as a member of the organization?
There's no communication. There's no whatsoever. It's typical, but I'm okay with that. And I think this is today's idea for change. It's not going to be like this. And I think this is today's idea for change. It's not gonna be like this forever. That's my answer to that question.
All right, that's John Leacock, all right? Big community member and of course, a a a great leader of this community as well for years. Thank you for for your time.
I appreciate the time and more power to the people.
That's it. So what has been going on?
Um, well, I am, I've been introduced to Guelph Black Heritage Society. I came here in two thousand seventeen. I did an art show. Um I paint my own art. I do a lot of work in the arts and community service work. And um I came here for my own art show. I gathered with a whole bunch of individuals from Guelph and, you know, other communities. I came together to share their art and express their love for earth. And, you know, that's the significance that this building has for me since. And like when I was there in two thousand seventeen, um it was a whole different look, like the front doors were open. I came in through the front doors. Uh there were pews and it was really beautiful. The energy was great. It was like a warm and like welcoming environment and, you know, take it back of like, bring it back to now where we are here. Um, you know, we're waiting to come inside this building and I wish that, you know, we have this entrance here and I wish we could have people come in through the front. Like, I don't feel the same thing right now. And I don't know if it's because, you know, the building's not being used to its, you know, fullest capacity or the way it needs to be used. And like, me being a member of the community, you know, about community service work, like I work in healthcare, I've worked in healthcare for seven and a half years. I have, you know, I worked in, you know, community service, uh group homes for people with developmental disabilities, all of that. You know, I wanna see more work for people, like not just people of color or, you know, biracial people, but people of all colors in the whole Guelph community to come together and, you know, socialize, meet one another, you know, share some conversations, grow, develop and you know, develop the community together, cause that's what we're here for, right? And that's what this building is here for. And it brought people together who, you know, had experienced so much turmoil and and trauma in their lives. And, you know, it was a place of worship and that is important. And, you know, bringing people together in a building like this is important for just, not just Guelph and and BIPOC people, but everybody.
So you've actually seen uh and, you know, met Wayne and Jonathan Ball and so forth.
Yeah.
And since that time, um you know, what have you observed in that sense? Um in terms of the, you know, actionary aspects uh of being a part of the GBHS?
Um yeah, uh I, from what I've witnessed, I see that the original founders have kind of been shunned out of the organization, like it's not, they don't have a say anymore in what goes on in the building, you know? What happens in the building, who's led into the building, you know, somebody else has completely taken control of it and it needs to be opened up. And the original founders wanna see the building be in use, right? They wanna see people come in and enjoy themselves and it it's not a party place, like it's a church, but like come in and gather and find your community, right?
Yeah.
And and the original founders, I know them personally, and that's literally what they want. They want that for their people.
Yeah. In a recent media articles uh showing uh on on the, there was an article during Black History Month uh basically expressing that the founders were somewhat volunteers. Um how do you, how are you taking that?
Um unfortunately, I don't think that's right. Like, they have invested so much of their time, their energy, their, you know, emotions into something that was, you know, a passion project for them. And it wasn't just passion, it was something that it, you know, really connected them to their spiritual presence in this community and then their own heritage and their own cultural heritage. And, you know, that is important. And I feel like we all should be able to revel in that and experience that. Because that's what the original founders had for it. That was what their original intentions were. And somehow, you know, along the way, you know, there's a lot of miscommunication, people are being discrimi- the original founders are being discriminated against. It's been their own organization. I feel like they're being shunned out. They don't have a say. And, you know, they actually have a better, you know, perception of what the community wants because they're more prominent in the community. You know, somebody who, you know, works for a building and kinda just does the stuff for the building is okay, that's great, like. But what about outreach in the community? What about, you know, holding more community events? What about opening up the building more to the community? Just, you know, so people are more aware of what your organization does.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So I'm really glad that you got to speak with us a bit. Uh you got anything else you wanted to explain uh about what you wanna see going forward?
Yeah, um as for me, like my own personal endeavors, like I I don't know if any of you kinda really know what I do, but like I have a radio show, I I do a lot in the community. I wanna start opening up my own community organizations and working out of churches to have drop-ins for people who are disadvantaged and marginalized within our community. And, you know, give them a space where they can connect, you know, get access to resources in the community, like food resources, you know, anything like um financial assistance, all those kinds of things, because we need that in the community.
All right. Thank you, Sharice. It was amazing that we got to talk with you.
Yeah, thank you, Keon.